Okay, with that, I'm going to turn this study session, which is Economic Development Quarterly Report, over to Tom Cole, our Economic Development Administrator. Mr. Cole?
Great, Mayor Board of Alderman. Thank you for the time this evening. You've heard me talk a number of times about some of the projects we're working on, or the majority of the projects we're working on. And as it was due for another quarterly report, I decided that, you know, now it's probably time where we can kind of do a virtual tour, if you will, and see what's going on. And I, you know, I think, I think most of us drive by these particular projects every day, but I don't know that we really stop to quantify and kind of put together in our heads exactly how much stuff is going on. And this evening, I will hopefully not be long-winded, but we're going to, we're going to basically fly over through this program roughly 40 new things that have happened over the past 16 months, which I think is pretty amazing. Now, they're not all big projects. I know every once in a while, I'll hear from folks who will call and say, "You guys are only working on big projects." I think what you'll see this evening is quite the contrary to that, to where the vast majority of what we're working on are small business concerns rather than, than large business concerns. We are, I will perhaps apologize a little bit upfront. We are somewhat at the mercy of the technology this evening. We have a wireless connection to the projector, which there's a slight delay between my movements here and the movements that you'll see on the screen, so I apologize for that. And of course, if we lose the connection, then we'll go back to good old-fashioned ad-libbing for the rest of my time. So Theresa, if, Ms. Henry, if you could actually turn down the lights a little bit there. And we'll start at a familiar place, being Raytown City Hall to begin our virtual tour this evening. Obviously, City Hall is not one of our development projects. But just down the road is Eden's Acre, right here at 59th and Raytown Trafficway. And Eden's Acre opened, oh, I think, I think sort of toward the end of last year, the middle of last year. Basically restored that old pump house that was on the corner, turned it into an Amish food and fresh produce center. Traveling north from there, and we're not going to stop very long at most of these, but if you have questions, please, please do bring them about. Traveling north to roughly 53rd Street and Raytown Road, many of you have called and asked about the former Valero Station, which is highlighted there. And my other apology upfront is that I'm grossly colorblind, and that's no exaggeration. So if I mention something is blue, and it's purple or red, just hang in there with me. The owner of this property, purchased the property early last year and really needed a larger space. So what he's done is he's redefined the footprint of that building. He's made the building bigger. As he did make those adjustments, he was required to do some floodplain adjustments because there is a body of water behind him. And I'm not talking about super splash, but there is a creek that goes behind him. So he had to make those, those improvements. Had a couple of infrastructure improvements there, and he's in the process of doing that. I've gotten the question of why is it taking so long to, you know, rehab this gas station? And the reason is simply that he's kind of paying as he goes and developing as he goes. But I think it should be completely operational here at early summer, if not sooner. Shooting across 53rd Street to Blue Ridge Plaza. We'll get there, just hang with me. Get a lot of calls about this particular property as well, 53rd and Blue Ridge Boulevard. The, I'm going to say yellow, but it's probably not yellow. The box at the top of the screen is the former IGA Grocery Store. Many of you may have heard that an athletic training facility has been looking at that 32,000 square foot space. They're still looking at it. I think the name of the game in that particular project, and many projects, is going to be financing. And folks have asked, you know, okay, their financing is tight, but do we have an incentive that can help them? A, a particular business like that, that's membership-driven, and really doesn't generate sales tax dollars, so we can't do a community improvement district? And, and the 353 program would really, as it's really one property, really desire that the entire property be reskinned or redeveloped or whatnot. And there's simply not, not that kind of dollars in this particular game. But aside from, you know, the city's participation in that, which, which I don't think we can do, I think, I think financing is still an issue with their particular team. On a completely different note, and unrelated to that, a gentleman walked into my office today with another idea for that space. And I believe he's going to be working with Block &amp; Company, and the owner of that property, to see if that's, that's a feasible option as well. The other box that's just under the little hand here will be clear wireless, clear wireless. I believe they may do some cellular service or phone service, but really, the key, the key hook, key to their business is wireless internet, making it affordable and available to just about everyone. So that's, that's another project that's going into Blue Ridge Village. We'll kind of scroll back to the west side of the city. And we'll talk about this project, actually, later this evening, I believe, on our last agenda item this evening. BHA GE Environmental. We brought them before you for their first reading at the last Board of Alderman meeting. They've been here in Raytown since 2001 or before that. They got their 353 tax abatement in 2001 to secure 220 employees, as well as to retain the, the headquarters of that particular operation. So we've been working with them to make sure that they stay in Raytown. That number of jobs, of course, is, has reduced to about 180 at this point. But still, it's, it's a very important company to this town, as, as are all of our companies. But a concentration of employees like that is, is highly vital. Heading back to the east on 63rd Street, the first property that you'll see there at the bottom, let me hone in a little bit tighter there, is the Stained Glass Association of America. Currently, they're operating out of, out of basically an existing home that's there. But it is a commercial property for them. Stained Glass Association of America, I may have mentioned earlier in the year. They're currently in the process of fundraising to build a stained glass school here in Raytown. This is where they call home. This is where they want to see their business flourish. But a stained glass school, as well as a, and modernized headquarters, they're in the process, like I said, of fundraising. And hopefully, we'll, we'll see something out of that here in, you know, 24, 36 months. It's a long-term project, but it is still a very uniquely Raytown organization. In fact, John Benson and I had an opportunity to speak at their annual conference last year. They had individuals in Raytown from all over the world. They're the Stained Glass Association of America, but they do have membership in New Zealand, Korea, UK, all over the world. And they're right here in Raytown. In fact, there are only two places in the entire world where you can become a certified stained glass technician. And one of them is right here in Raytown, Missouri. So I think that's pretty, pretty uniquely us. Heading a little further east, the black outline is Precision Electrical Sales. Dwayne Basham and his company moved from Independence to this particular property in the middle of last year, bringing 17 sales positions with them. Precision Electrical Sales is basically an organization that is, is an owner's rep for the electrical services business. Provide services to electricians, materials to electricians and whatnot. The, that particular building, at one point, was a ranch home. It then turned into a physician's office. If you drive by now at 6300 Evanston, I think you'll be amazed at what it's been transformed into. I'd also suggest you just stop by and say hi to Dwayne, poke your head in the door. And I think you'll be even more amazed is, at what the interior of that particular space looks like. Across the street, hopefully, that's blue because that is the Blue U Restaurant, although it may not be. The Blue U Restaurant, they opened at the very beginning of this year, serving a variety of Asian dishes, Korean, Vietnamese, Thai, Chinese. Their business seems to be going pretty well at this point, and have suggested that, that they're pretty happy with their location and the services they've received from the city at this point. Immediately to the east, underneath the hand is Wendy's. We've talked about this a number of times, but they completely reskinned their building. And I believe they're working on the interior of that building where we're going to last weekend. So that project has, has moved along as well. And of course, this presentation isn't simply what's going on right now, but really looks back over the past 16 months, some of the projects that we have done, some that are in the works, and some that are, that are yet to come. Immediately to the north is the Center 63 Project. Again, that was a 353 project that came through this body, I believe, first quarter of this year, if not fourth quarter of last year, to help revitalize the entire center. I know there's, there's some notion out there that this was a Save-A-Lot project. Save-A-Lot's a component of this project, but really, the 353 went to help all of those tenants provide a safety and security note to them where they could re-up their leases for a longer term. Most of, many of them were month-to-month. I believe many of them have, have secured term leases at this point to assure that they stay there a bit longer. Save-A-Lot is currently demising or dividing the former Cottington space into a 15,000 square foot store with a 16,000 square foot white box, which will be available for tenant by, for lease by an additional tenant at some point. It's my understanding that Save-A-Lot is scheduled for a June 1 opening. So they are very aggressive to get done here in the next 28, 29 days. Moving over to the green space. As you are all aware, about this time last year, we received requests for proposal responses for the green space former First Baptist Church Raytown site. We received two proposals. One was head and shoulders above the S, above the rest. And the governing body basically asked staff to go ahead and study this project, study the issue, study the finances, see if it does make sense for our downtown. The entire project, the entire build-out would have been about $10 million. And going back to, you know, the economy is certainly getting better, but a $10 million note from any lending institution is extremely difficult to come by. We, we still believe that that entrepreneur that came forward is a great one, could be a great fit. But the financing markets just aren't going to allow, at this point, to our belief. We're still working with them and still offering up some, some other alternatives, perhaps whether the project can be phased into multi-phases rather than one big dream all at once. And, and there's still some, some brain power going into that. But at, at some point in the future, we may need to come back to this body and say, "Where do you want us to go from here? Do you want us to put the RFP back on the street? Do we want to, you know, garner additional community input? Where do you want us to go?" So right now, that project is really, just kind of is what it is right now. Immediately to the east, this box behind Raytown Plaza, Jason Curry, who owns Escom, a tech company in the basement of Raytown Plaza here on, on this corner, purchased these, this lot, these two lots, two existing homes. One burned down just about a month ago. On the, on, right beneath the hand here, it burned down. It's been demolished. It's been gone. He's leasing this house out, renting it out. Jason has a much larger dream for potential future development on this property for his particular business, which is in this portion of Raytown Plaza. Escom, for those who may not know, is, is a technology company that's, that's developed a communication device for the hearing impaired. It, it really is a fantastic company. It's changing the lives of how the hearing impaired communicate with those who have hearing in retail settings and whatnot. It's my understanding that about every Sam's Club in America has one of Jason's devices there so that the hearing impaired individuals can come by and communicate with a hearing person and find out where their five gallons of pickles are in the store. So Escom is kind of leaving its mark and really helping people throughout, throughout the world at this point. I actually skipped one, going back to the heart of the downtown area here. Just to the south of the green space, there's a little blue box where the jewelry store used to be. That's currently slated to become a barber shop. And again, as you, as you're seeing, you know, we're talking about businesses of all sizes and shapes at this point. Further, 63rd Terrace is the Medlin Redevelopment, which is the former home of Genesis Plumbing, base effort of fire, I believe, on New Year's Eve of 2009. Joe Medlin purchased the property and is still in the process of revamping and revitalizing that space to be used for, for small office space at some point. It's currently under construction. Heading further east is Batz Communications, which Batz was on Raytown Road to the north. And he simply needed, needed a larger amount of space, a little different space. But wanted, but has a heart for Raytown and opted to stay here. He completely revitalized that building. And, and it's a great office space at this point. Now going a little bit further east to Woodson Village. We've actually had two relatively exciting developments at recent, at Woodson Village here just the past couple of weeks. If we can get there. Great, Woodson Village. I believe this is a red, well, maybe it's a black box. Anyway, this box. I wasn't kidding about this color thing. The former Big Mama's Space has been occupied by an organization called Doughboys. Doughboys opened on Friday. Donuts, coffee, breakfast, lunch, sandwiches, pizza, ice cream. And I'm sure I'm forgetting something else. If it's, if it's any, I'm, I'm somewhat fickle, but I've been there three times in the past five days. I think Doughboys is going to do very, very well in Raytown as far as a great sandwich shop and whatnot. The space down below will be a women's consignment clothing store called Ms. Nittikens. I may not be able to spell that, but that's the name, Ms. Nittikens. They're currently doing the construction on the interior finish of that space. I'd anticipate they'd be up and going by the summertime as well. Additionally, in Woodson Village, and I don't believe I have that property marked at this point, another barber shop's also planned for Woodson Village as well. So I think it's pretty exciting to see that neighborhood center really getting a shot in the arm, and really getting some, some, some excitement right now and some interest. Now we'll come back toward the center of town. And I've pledged tonight to not just talk about the great things, but also talk about the things that got away, or weaseled away, or couldn't get financed or whatnot as well. I think we need to take a honest look at everything that's going on. And one of those is the hot dog stand that we talked about a number of months ago, which is immediately next to the Hangout or across from the former Hometown Realty. The hot dog stand, plain and simple, opted to go somewhere else. Somewhere else that didn't have a construction schedule, somewhere else that they could just move into and go. So they went to another community. The question's been asked, okay, what happens to the 353 tax abatement that was granted for that property? The answer to that is, it's, it, the abatement is basically abated. It will not activate unless the developer comes back with an identical plan or goes back to the Raytown Municipal Redevelopment Corporation with an amendment to the plan to put something else there. So as of this moment, there is no abatement for that particular property. Across the road, and I know Mr. Betagler is here. He's, the Raytown Times is currently occupying some space within the former Hometown Realty building. A little bit to the south, I believe this restaurant was there a number of years ago, but Shanghai Express has recently reopened. So they're, they're there in the heart of downtown as well. Coming back out and headed south on Raytown Trafficway. I'm making everyone dizzy, I apologize. In the same retail center as Mama China is over here, Loot Fees is in here. On the end cap of this particular center is Omaha Tropical Market. Omaha Tropical Market moved in, in the middle of last year. Basically, it, it sells a variety of different ethnic foods, African foods, Hispanic foods, Caribbean foods. By all accounts, they're doing pretty well. We don't typically associate Omaha with being tropical, but it is the Omaha Tropical Market. And obviously, their original store is in, is in Omaha. The red box, Ritter's BBQ, which opened Janu- January of 2010. They seem to be doing very well. And I believe they're happy with their, their location, their decision to be here in Raytown. Immediately to the south of that, on the end cap of this building, is Revma Healthcare, Healthcare and Chiropractic. They moved in toward the third quarter of last year, and by all accounts, seem happy with their space. Headed directly to the west, actually passed it. See, I'm colorblind. Reds and greens run together, so I can't even see my own lines there. I apologize. But immediately beneath the hand is where Genesis Plumbing relocated after their fire on 63rd Terrace. They moved into this particular building in about the third quarter of last year. And again, seemed very happy with their space and seemed to be doing very, very well. Heading down Raytown Road to the, a number of months back, this board approved a conditional use permit for what I believe many folks call the, the gorilla car wash. Apparently, at one point in its history, they rolled out a big gorilla in front of the car wash to attract attention. But the automatic car wash, that project, will not be advancing as the bank terminated the lease. We're not privy as to why. We just know that, that it happened. So that project is, that particular building is for sale. And until they have, until they have an owner, the car wash will not, will not be there. Immediately next to that, and the car wash is the longer box there. Car wash is the longer box. Immediately on that corner, though, is Vantage Motors, which came before this body, again, some time ago. And I've gotten a number of calls saying, "What's the holdup with this guy? Why isn't he moving in? Why isn't he selling cars, et cetera?" The reason's pretty simple. He's currently negotiating with MoDOT. A portion of his site plan includes parking on what turned out to be MoDOT right-of-way. He's in discussions with MoDOT to determine if, if in fact, he can have that. I believe it's, it's really an issue of about 18 inches. If he can, in fact, utilize that 18 inches or not, or if he has to redraw his site plan or where he's at. But we, we've gotten word from MoDOT that that issue should be resolved in the, in the very, very short future, as in the next couple of weeks. So we should see some activity on that. He's very excited to get going, we know. Of course, Raytown crossing east. The large polygon there in the middle of the, in the middle of the screen, former Dodge dealership. I think this area was actually taken after one of our big storms last year. As you can see, much of the insulation is piled up on top of the roof. The building's obviously been demolished. IHOP is rapidly being constructed right here. We met with the developer, the developer's attorney, and the developer's new architect in the middle of last week. They're actually, I think they've got a little bit of a fire under them now. And I think they're excited to start pushing this project forward and pushing this property forward. The initial plan was for IHOP to be right about where this hand is. Perhaps another building here, and perhaps one here. Our 350 design standards and development standards really dictate or prefer that buildings be pushed out closer to the road. It helps the building. It also provides interior parking. The developer has agreed and is currently putting together an additional site plan, which would have a building roughly here, as well as here. We also believe that they are very close to getting a signature tenant for the, as the first tenant of one of those buildings. Both would be multi-tenant buildings of perhaps 6,000 to 8,000 square feet for each building. So we're mostly talking about mid-sized retail, mid-sized restaurants, occupying anywhere from maybe 2,500 to 4,000 square feet per restaurant. They have also, and we should be receiving their, their proposed TIF amendment. As you recall, when we went through the process with them for IHOP at the end of last year, that there were still some, some unfinished business with, with regard to bringing the TIF up to speed, to making the TIF plan that we have actually apply to, to what their development plan is. Because it, this particular property was, I believe, originally fashioned to include the Walmart, which is there, as well as a very large home improvement user, which didn't come simply because of the economy. So that particular site plan, that particular component of the TIF plan from before isn't applicable to what, what the game plan is at this point. So we're working with them. They're crafting that. We should have it sometime here in the next few months. Additionally, what they have determined, and the document that they're, they're, that we're all putting together, will identify sort of the, the win on this. But they have also determined that the gas station, it's not feasible to reuse that building, so it will be coming down at some point. And I know we went around and around with this body as to whether or not, you know, that is a, a good thing, a not-so-good thing, what will it look like? We're not going to have to worry about it as it's going to come down. Taking a little bit of a step back here. Immediately to the south of where the 350 sign is, I don't have the foggiest idea what color I picked for that, so I apologize. This is the Disabled American Veterans drop spot that moved in a number of months ago. You know, I'm really surprised at how many calls I've received, you know, kind of praising that project. I mean, it's very small. Might be the smallest thing we've touched all year. But people are thrilled that they can go contribute their, their stuff there, their, you know, the things they're trying to discard from their home, and that the money goes to the veterans. I think they're, they're very thrilled with that. Immediately beneath the hand right here, the former Fiesta Azteca Restaurant. Cousins Catfish moved into that about, I'll say, 45 days ago or so. They seem to be doing very well and are very happy with the space that they've, they've selected there. Heading east, and we're kind of on the, heading west, and we're kind of on the home stretch here, is Gregory Square. And it's starting to come into, to vision here. At the former Crawford Chrysler dealership is in the blue, I believe, at Gregory 350 in Ditzler. That, that building has obviously been demolished. Aldi's is, the steel's up in the air. You can see the frame of the building. It's, it's coming to play right now as you drive out to 350. You can see dramatic changes on this, on this four-acre piece of property. Actually drew this polygon incorrectly. The blue should actually extend out here. This green space is actually the watered storm detention for the Aldi and future restaurant site. I'll explain the restaurant in just a minute. Additionally, this polygon is, the developer was in this room, so I'm not spoiling any secrets here. The developer actually announced in this room in a public forum that he does have the intent to purchase what's in this polygon and expand his, his development to the east. Now, the restaurant, I get a lot of questions, okay, what's going on? You know, we said we were going to have a restaurant in front of Aldi. Where is it at? What's going on? They, they actually had a letter of intent with a particular restaurant, and then Burbelia closed, which is right under the hand here, across the intersect, across Gregory. Burbelia closed. The same developer put an option on this property, has a due diligence contract on the Burbelia building. So as soon as that project became, that site became available, the restaurant that was here said, "Hey, we want to take a look at what's going on over here. We don't necessarily want to sign on here." So right now, and since that time, there's also two additional restaurants. They're kind of juggling right now to see who can go where. The kicker with the Burbelia project is it currently has 99, or the Burbelia property currently has 29, rather, parking spaces. Not enough for a retail restaurant of any size. I believe this property is about 8,000 square feet in building. You know, that's, that's actually a pretty large restaurant. So it would really behoove the owner to, to cut it into two, two spaces. But regardless, 29 parking spaces isn't enough for a full-service restaurant. We've had a preliminary conversation with MoDOT about, about taking ownership of this triangle of right-of-way. MoDOT, as, as you've probably read, is currently unloading a fair amount of right-of-way throughout the state of Missouri, simply so they don't have to maintain it, they don't have to pay to mow it, et cetera. That would certainly be an option. And right now, we're just kind of kicking tires, throwing ideas around. Can we close this little stretch of Ditzler? Can the, the developer purchase this piece of property, utilize this space for parking, and reconfigure that to where it could really be used for a full-service restaurant? So a number of balls are in the air on that one as well. Across the street, across 350, this little building immediately behind Fun House Pizza. This body approved Kiddo's Place Daycare a number of months back. I believe they pulled their construction permit here in the past week or 10 days, so we should see some activity on this particular property really soon. Crossing back over the street, this strip center, Town, Town Center. This is where Los Campos and Radio Shack, and at the end is Blockbuster. This polygon I have drawn here in the middle, Rent-A-Center has actually relocated from Briwood on the Kansas City side of our, of our property line, and is relocated into this building. So it's a, a new tenant that we've got. This blue polygon or rectangle here at Laurel Avenue and 350, the former Car-X dealership, or Car-X Auto Repair Shop, sat vacant for a while. And, and, you know, no, no disrespect to Car-X, but, but I'm, I'm sure the yellow structure works great for Car-X. But there's really not much more unappealing than a vacant, bright-yellow building on your main stretch of highway in town. Gary Calvert, Calvert's Auto Express, came in, purchased that property, repainted it. The paint job alone really changes the feel of that intersection. So that's a great project as far as cleaning up 350 goes as well. The next polygon, this is actually just McDonald's. McDonald's did a great interior remodel. They're still considering whether they're going to remodel the exterior of that, that particular building as well. But they made an investment on 350 Highway as well this year. And the last one, certainly not least, is Sutherland's. And I have no clue what color that is, but that's Sutherland's. The old, the old Walmart space, I was actually in the building early this morning. They're in there tearing stuff out. They're getting ready to go. And I believe that they have a, a targeted start date or opening date of about September 1. Aldi also has a, has a September 1 targeted start date. Trying to see if I've forgotten or missed anything along these lines at this point.
I'm going to say targeted start date, but that's actually completion date.
I mean, you say targeted start date, but that's actually completion date.
Oh, that'd be their, yeah, right. That'd be their opening date. Correct, correct. Everybody right now is under construction as far as the big three, or what's become known as the big three of Sutherland's, the Aldi project, as well as the IHOP area there as well. They're all three under construction. I was in the building this morning, actually met the individual who will be the store manager. He's in there with his sleeves rolled up. He's doing stuff right now, and they're very, very excited to get this project moving and going. I think that's it, is really kind of my flyover goes, but just wanted to, you know, again, reiterate that our serious economic development effort is still relatively new, and I think as a team in City Hall here, we really thought that we wanted to get in this, roll up our sleeves, and start off with a few exciting nodes throughout Raytown to show that things are possible, to show that we can attract new investment to our community, that we can foster entrepreneurship. And I think we've, thus far, I mean, early in the game, we've done that. I think 350, unfortunately, you know, 350's getting a lot of the attention right now. That's really market-driven. But I think, but I think as we kind of went through this tour tonight, I think you saw projects in just about every corner of town. So I think some exciting things are going on, and with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have at this point.
Tom, I want to thank you. Before we do that, I mean, you've certainly been quite a contribution to the city, and it's great to see all the different things we've got going on. I continue to, you know, while every city around us has the exact same situation, the economy's affected them also. I mean, when you look at the numbers of things that we have going on, I think it's phenomenal, and I'm very proud of what we're doing and that. And again, I think the board has done an admirable job of looking at the different plans before them, and those that have involved some incentivization, we've acted in a business like manner on that. So thank you for all that you've done, and are there questions? We may have a, Tom, Miss Mel.
I really appreciate having the list and being able to look at the different things because I think that puts it in a whole different perspective than sometimes just reading it and going, okay, yeah, I see that and that. But being able to look at that and then, you know, look at the map and see all the different developments and stuff that, all the stuff that is happening. So I really do appreciate all that work.
Mr. Azure.
During the last election, I did ask Mr. McDonald for the figures on how many new small businesses opened up the previous year as well as major businesses, and I did find in going door-to-door that this was of particular interest to the people of Raytown. And I know at that time, you didn't really have a system in place for going back and fishing out the numbers accurately. You volunteered to do that with your own time, and we knew they weren't probably accurate, but they were close. And I guess what I want to share with you is that I think it would be good for all the board members if, at the end of the year, I know you do this quarterly, and so in December or at the beginning of January, if you could give us the figures of the total number of new small businesses as well as major ones. This is something that oftentimes, I mean, when we're in the public and we have the opportunity to talk about our city and what you are doing and what the city is doing and what we're accomplishing, I found that it just got a great reception. People like to hear that. They really want to know, and if you could maybe come up with a system, work with Mr. Benson or however you would do that, so that you could easily fish out those figures accurately and then give it to us, I think that we could use them well to our advantage.
Absolutely. I think we can put together a dashboard of sorts that shows the number of jobs, capital investment, and whatnot as well. You bet.
Mr. Mock.
Yeah, it's great to see revitalization. I mean, when was the last time you saw Woodson Village bringing three tenants, you know? Do you have a question on that? Who is the owner of Woodson Village Shopping Center?
Um...
What company?
The owner's actually MMG out of St. Louis. They're actually the same group that owns Blue Ridge Plaza. Both are being marketed right now by Bill Moss at Block &amp; Company.
Okay. You mentioned on number four, the proposed athlete training facility.
Mm-hmm.
Can you mention what possibly would be the other option?
You know, at this point, we haven't received any sort of an application or any real, it would be a recreation slash entertainment venue.
Okay.
Family-oriented.
Okay, and there is another facelift that was done on 350 Highway, and that was Applebee's this year.
Absolutely.
A new sign.
And there may be some that got away from me as I was composing this list. Applebee's would be one, as they recently did complete a facelift. Another one that just came to mind is Awesome Detail on Raytown Road in the north end of town, moved into a new building and are doing all right as well.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Tom.
Mr. Van Busker.
Thank you.
I kept wanting to call you Mr. Ertz.
Thank you. We also had a motorcycle shop that is located up on 63rd Street, right?
That's right. Absolutely.
Recently. You know, when I drive by the old Dodge location, I keep imagining smelling pancakes cooking there, but not quite yet. But when can we anticipate the IHOP opening?
We've seen the exterior go up really fast. The honest answer is I don't know. I think it's going to come in well in advance of the Aldis, which is September 1. I'd be surprised if, and again, this is me talking, this isn't IHOP talking, this isn't their franchisee or construction folks talking. I'd be surprised if it was much later than July. I think they're going to turn it pretty quick, and right now, the attention to detail is entirely on interior space.
I noticed they was even working on Sunday on the project, so I think they appear to be wanting to complete it in a rapid fashion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ertz? The real Mr. Ertz.
There we go. Thank you. You know, with gas approaching $4 a gallon, many people are thankful that there's more opportunities to shop closer to home. And of course, shopping closer to home puts more money into our streets, more dollars for developing our staff, and I really appreciate all you're doing, and it's a great step forward for the town that we can actually have, be on the uptick, one of the few upticks in the metro area. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you all of the staff, too, because I know there's probably more than you.
That's right.
Anything else you want to add, sir?
Nope, that's it.